Start voting, roll call. Did we get everybody? We're missing one person. Okay. Ms. Holly?
All councilors present and a quorum has been declared.
Alright, great. Okay, up next on the, we have the agenda approval. Council Grego?
If there's no change, I'll make the motion. We approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Not? Please start voting. Okay, Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Alright, great. Up next on the agenda, we have citizen comments. This is the segment of the agenda where we have our citizens who are in the audience have an opportunity to come to the podium and make any comments that you may have. We ask that you keep your comments to less than three minutes. There is a timer right here. Once it reaches three minutes, if you're still talking, I will politely ask you to have a seat. I've received a couple of comment cards. Ms. Holly, do you have any other comment cards or are these the only comment cards for the night?
Those are the only ones I received.
Okay, thank you. So, the first person we have is Shayna Hobbs.
Good evening, council.
Thank you.
I'm Shayna Hobbs. I live here in Alamosa County, in the city, actually. I'm coming to talk to you tonight in response to the outdoor ban question that passed yesterday. Needless to say, I'm very disappointed that citizens took it upon themselves to use this process to take away the rights of others in which they had no interest in. This petition process is supposed to be used for the betterment of society, I thought, and voters also in Alamosa let me down, let a lot of people down that do believe in growing their own medicine and growing their own alternative to other drugs or alcohol, rather recreational things that they want to use. So, I'm upset on behalf of a lot of medical patients that live here in Alamosa County, specifically here in the city, that, you know, they're now being forced to either grow indoors and again, all of those issues are being, going to be revisited. People that are affluent, that have room to grow, that have the money and the means to grow, they won't have a problem with this, I don't suppose, but it's all the people that would like to utilize their own backyard, their own private property. So, okay, we could beat a dead horse on this, but we won't. I would like to offer some, I don't know, suggestions of how the council could respond and helping to shape this policy. I know you could just easily go back and copy and paste everything that you all had before we advocated for patients to be able to grow outside. There were some things that I didn't agree with with all of that respect, one being no greenhouses were allowed, so I would hope that you could revisit that as an option. Also, to just put this little pipe dream out there that you could implement stores immediately without, you know, voter approval. That is your right as council, as people who run this city. I know it's risky. I know people have voted against it in the past. So, another option would be to write your own question and put a question on the ballot next year for, for y'all to support and for y'all to be able to make the tax question all in one, however that looks, but to give people an option now since the outdoor growing is no longer feasible for them. I am, want to reiterate that it's upsetting that a three-month grow period is too much for some people. I know this has a lot of religious roots and it's rooted in bigotry and prejudice and ignorance and I'm not ashamed or afraid to say it, that some people are just ignorant on the issue and they need to realize that if it's not affecting them directly, then they should remain silent on it, not visit those stores. There's a lot of things that go without saying, but I just want to say one more time that I hope you guys come up with some fair alternatives since we now don't have this option and I hope that the consequences of this, people growing outdoors don't outweigh any kind of rationalization, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Have a good night. Okay, up next, we have Alex and Karen Miller.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having us here.
Good.
So, my name is Alex Miller. This is my wife Karen. We've moved into the city of Alamosa about eight years ago. We purchased a home. In those last eight years, we've seen a fast progression of the deer population and along with the fast progression of the deer population, we've seen the same level of deer problems and issues. Where our house is located is at Levin Wildwood. Our backyard is open to one of the retainer ponds and part of the drainage system located in the Riverwood subdivision. The city has various easement rights to these ponds and the drainage system that borders the back and most of the sides of our house because of these easements where we can't put up a fence. Give you some examples of the problems we've encountered. We've had to physically fight off on four separate occasions, deers, deer that have reared up on me or my wife. There's been countless times where deer have charged us or my, one of our family members or our pets. Deer have physically attacked our pets on six occasions and on the three of these occasions resulted in vet visits, which totaled over eleven hundred dollars. A deer ran through one of our front windows and broke it. That totaled thirteen hundred dollars. Every summer, we purchase decorative plants and flowers for the front of our property. That costs us three or four hundred dollars a year. We spray additional deer repellent on these deer-proof plants and they still get eaten every year. We put up deer fence around our trees in hopes to keep, to protect our trees. Deer, the bucks get fighting or they'll rub their horns on the fencing, destroys our fencing around our trees. So, we're replacing those almost annually. In the winter, the deer will come and dig divots into our lawns and I'm repairing our lawn in the spring of every year. We've trained our pets to not do their business on our lawn. They'll go in our dirt in our backyard and, but it's really entertaining to me that I'm cleaning deer manure up off my lawn all year long. Those are the things, some of the things that we've encountered that I'm hoping that the city will do something with the deer population becoming so excessive.
And I'd just like to, to say that I, I was born and raised here in Alamosa and to say that the deer were here first is not true. I, I lived on Lambert Drive. It bordered, it borders Carroll Park and growing up, we played out in the Riverwood subdivision, which was Carroll's Woods, and we did not see deer. We never had to worry about deer attacking small children or dogs or anybody that was out walking and that is a big worry now. They are going to hurt somebody soon.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. We're going to have a little follow-up after we finish these comments in regards to, okay? Thank you. Okay.
Well, thank you for having me this evening. Congratulations, Councilwoman Daniels, Council Grego and Hensley on your reelection. I'm sure you're happy to have that done with and we're happy to have you continue to serve our city. I'm just coming to speak tonight because a few of our folks and clients from La Puente are going to be speaking on later this evening about the river cleanup and their involvement in that effort. I just wanted to speak a little bit tonight about the, some of the work that we're continuing to do as La Puente in our community. Right now, some of the outreach that we're continuing to do is with our unsheltered homeless populations. So, these are folks that are not actively seeking services at La Puente or have been nixed from services at La Puente for some reason. So, these are folks that are currently living in our city right now. Shana Diaz, who's on our staff, is really leading the charge on this effort and we've identified over sixty individuals that are living in encampments in our town right now. So, these are active folks living right now and so we are continuing to figure out how we offer services with the reality that folks are living in this community out in our neighborhoods. So, we want to make sure that we do this in a dignified way in honoring the humanity that it is and continuing to figure out how we maximize resources and continue to offer support to those who need it the most. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Heather, I'm going to turn it back over to you for follow-up in regards to any comments.
Okay, thank you. I think she may have left in regards to the first item on, now that the election has passed and the outdoor grow. The city attorney did whisper to me in regards to her comment on greenhouses that there's actually nothing right now that prevents that. So, as long as the greenhouse is compliant with our building code as an accessory to the building, if they were growing marijuana in that, that would be okay. So, the bigger question there is to make sure that the greenhouse is compliant with the, the code. But then, we also will be, now that the election has happened, taking a look at what that language is and, and the best ways to incorporate that into our code and then probably want to do some education and make sure that our, our police forces inform that if we do receive complaints, that it's, you know, how they're going to do enforcement and, and that type of thing. Clearly, it would be more of a nuisance where if we get the call, we don't have the staffing to be able to look over everyone's fences to see if they're growing marijuana or not. In regards to the deer population, it's hard to hear those stories and if I could get your notes, that would be really great. We have been collecting information both from officially through our police when we get calls, when there's these accidents or the human pet interactions with deer. It's a sensitive topic for our community. There are those that are very passionate about protecting the deer and then there are those who are experiencing some of the stuff that you're experiencing and then those, if there's a car accident or those interactions. Problem is, there's no natural predators and that's not going to change and so it's something that from a staff perspective, we've begun researching of what can we do to try to start controlling this population? There's a lot of things we've canceled out, either because the Department of Wildlife says they're not effective or because they're too expensive and not effective at the same time. So, some of the options we are looking at, we're working on drafting a deer management plan that with the Department of Wildlife, we will probably need to get permission from the state Parks and Wildlife Board and so we're not quite sure what that process is, how often they meet, but it is something that we've, we've realized even though it's a bit divisive for our community, it's something that we need to come up with a plan. And so, part of that plan will include why we may need to take steps to handle that population, both from a disease perspective, the damage to property and the potential harm when there's that interaction with pets and, and humans. And so, it's not a fun thing to talk about because we have very passionate people on both sides, but it is something that we need to, to get under control and so I want to share that. But if I can get your list, that helps us better articulate what's going on in our community. So, that would be very helpful. And that's all I have from the follow-up perspective.
Okay, thank you very much, Heather. Appreciate it. Up next, we have ceremonial items. The SLV Hospice Month Proclamation. I believe we have Kendra Decker and Laura Lewis, if you'd like to come up to the podium. So, what I'm going to do is I'll allow you all to make any comments that you may have and then after that, what I'll do is I'll read this proclamation and then council will go down and present the proclamation to you all and then we'll take a group picture. Is that okay?
Perfect.
Alright, good. And if you could talk into the mic, that'd be great.
My name's Kendra Decker. I'm a registered nurse. I've worked with Hospice Del Valle for four years. Laura Lewis is our executive director. She's been with Hospice for about ten years. She's been in our executive director role for two and we have some amazing things happening and changing. We've been established here in the San Luis Valley as a nonprofit in the early nineteen eighties. We have a board of directors that kind of guides us and we love being able to serve the population here in the San Luis Valley. Of course, there's some challenges, but we absolutely enjoy the privilege of serving patients and families at the end of their life in a place where we get the privilege of being in a sacred journey and a lot of times invited into patients' homes. And so, it's a beautiful thing what we do and we're so grateful for you guys recognizing that. November is National Hospice and Palliative Care Month and so that's incredibly valuable that you guys are willing to recognize that alongside of us. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome. And Laura, did you want to say anything?
I think she summarized it all.
Okay, good deal. Alright, thank you. Okay, I'll read the proclamation. The San Luis Valley Hospice Month. Whereas hospice and palliative care philosophy empower people facing a serious or life-limiting illness to live as fully as possible, surrounded and supported by family and loved ones. Whereas beyond providing physical treatment, hospice attends to the patient's emotional, spiritual and family needs and provides family services like respite care and bereavement counseling. Whereas hospice and palliative care bring patients and family caregivers the highest quality care delivered by an interdisciplinary team of skilled professionals that includes physicians, nurses, social workers, therapists, counselors, health aides, spiritual care providers and others who make the wishes of each patient and family a priority. Whereas through pain management and symptom control, caregiver training and assistance and emotional and spiritual support, allowing patients to live fully and make more meaningful moments until the end, surrounded and supported by the faces of loved ones, friends and committed caregivers. Whereas hospice and palliative care professionals are dedicated to helping diverse communities throughout the San Luis Valley access quality end-of-life care and are committed to removing barriers to accessing care. Whereas, a growing body of peer-reviewed research indicates that timely access to hospice and palliative care can decrease hospitalization and emergency room visits and increase quality of life for patients and family caregivers. Whereas, as every year, more than 1.6 to 1.7 million Americans living with life-limiting illnesses and their families receive care from the nation's hospice programs in communities throughout the United States. Whereas more than 430,000 trained volunteers contribute nineteen million hours of service to hospice programs annually in the United States. Whereas hospice and palliative care providers encourage all people to learn more about options of care and to share their wishes with family, loved ones and their healthcare professionals. Now, therefore, be it resolved by virtue of the authority vested in the city council of Alamosa, we do hereby proclaim November as the San Luis Valley Hospice Care Month and encourage citizens to increase their understanding, awareness of the care and the end of life and observe this month with appropriate activities and programs. Given under my hand and seal, Ty Coleman, on this day, November the sixth, two thousand nineteen. Alright, let's give them a round of applause. Okay, so we'll go down and present this to you. Next on the agenda, we have Consent Calendar A.
Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
Okay. Have a motion?
I'll second.
Second. Any further discussion? Not? Please start voting. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay. Well, thank you. Okay. Up next, under Regular Business, we have a presentation from an outside agency, the Five Star Rider Car Club and Alamosa County Prevention Coalition Community Cleanup on
Hi, I'm Anne Marie D. Herrera and I am the facilitator for the Alamosa County Prevention Coalition and Helen Sigmund is a part of our coalition and Bill?
Holson.
I'm sorry?
The wholesome guy.
Bill Holson Buck helped with our cleanup and then Hugh, no, Alexander Ince was also a part of the cleanup and then Jamie and Crystal Ray Dominguez also. Anyway, there were about ten people from the Prevention Coalition who came to the river to do some cleanup on the trails and stuff and Jamie did a lot of groundwork with Aaron Miltonberger on researching property owners and contacting them and setting up a roll-off dumpster from Silver Mountain disposal and then I bought stuff through the Coalition for the actual cleanup. But I have to tell you, that was a great experience and it felt wonderful to give back to our community, but we have a problem and it's, a lot of people are dumping back there and we'll talk about that a little bit later, but I wanted the Coalition members and the people that live out by the river to share a little bit because great things are coming out of this and the other part too is, we didn't clean up that many dirty needles. I was amazed. We didn't even fill up the bottom of one Sharp's container, so less than twenty needles. So, I also want to share that the Needle Exchange Program, also known as the SLV Sharp Program, and I can't remember what exactly the acronym is, is making a huge difference in our community and people are reporting that they're seeing less needles in the parks and out in the river and different places. So, that's helping make our community safer by reducing the harm that that can do. So, I'm going to turn this over to...
I think Bill went.
Bill.
I just, I just wanted to thank the city for allowing us to do what we, we did and it was a great experience for me and, and just thank you all. That's all I wanted to say, just thank you.
As a resident of the playground, it actually allowed a few of the residents out there to understanding and the ability to start working their way back into living mainstream, starting to understand their responsibilities towards where they live, you know? And it was something that couldn't be explained or taught to them. They had to do it themselves and we're still, I'm still working with a few of the residents to further accomplish our way as part of the mainstream community and not as outcasts, you know? You know, sorry about my voice, but...
Anyway, I also wanted to share that I left supplies with Jamie and he's given those, some of those supplies to the people that live out there and to me, when I go home, I cross the Rio Grande River out, out towards 160 and I saw what I thought were our garbage bags out there because they were the big contractors' bags, the big fifty-five gallon ones and I could be wrong, but they're willing to help clean up the area and make it presentable to our athletes and to the community members that walk those, the levee and the trails and we're pushing those trails as a tourist attraction and stuff and we really want to keep that clean. So, we had some asks of the city council to consider if we can get like dumpsters out there and Donna Weehy from SLV Health was thinking maybe we need to get bear-proof dumpsters out there. I don't know if that's possible, but then the dumping issue that's out there, is there something that we can do to prevent people from getting back there and dumping? Because the sofas, the carpet, all of that is, is pretty significant. Yes, sir?
Just a question. Can you tell us specifically where this is along the river?
Jamie.
So, we have a better idea?
Okay, so you know where Les Glasses? I don't know if it's the city or if it's the railroad who owns that road that you can take all the way to the back, but it stops. You either have to do a U-turn on the top or go down into the levee. It's right there, so I think, well, there was two issues going on. It was the encampments, I think, were abandoned and weren't being picked up because they didn't have the resources to move it out and the other one was dumping. We pulled out, looked like a whole living room rolled carpet like when they demo and they threw it in the river. So, it was in the water for who knows how long. It took us probably ten, fifteen minutes to dig it out of mud. And then they were throwing recliners, computers, bikes, just large items because I think once they get back there, nobody can see them. So, it's feasible for them just to go back there at night because you can go back there right now and just throw stuff off. So, that was one problem. I don't know what the city can do to help out with that. I know you do a large item pickup, but I'm thinking when these things get busted or people throw these out, if this large item isn't in, in place right then, they resort to going and throwing it on the levee. And the, the encampment community was just awesome to work with. I got to, you know, I took them bags out before. By the time I got there that day with the Coalition, they had probably fifteen, twenty bags already lined up on the levee and they're more than willing to help out and I don't know what the receptacle or a roll-off looks like or even just a pass-through with the city truck, just, I mean, they're willing to pull it out. But the dumping issue, it's all over. It's not just there. I see it on the county roads. I mean, I don't know if they had something maybe in the recycling part of this where you guys recycle, maybe to, for large items, maybe limit per address or something, but they're just throwing it off wherever they can back up a truck.
So, that was another thing that we wanted to ask the council to consider is maybe more frequent large item pickups other than just once a year in May for spring cleaning, just to help curtail the problem because if it isn't picked up at curbside, it's going to get picked up someplace else and it takes a lot of work to put that together, which we don't mind doing the work. We'll put in the work to help our community. That's what this Coalition is doing and I think it's going to help contribute to some of the economic development and I'm really sad that Pennies went out of business. I'm sad that Colorado Sports is going out of business and the tax revenues that are being lost from businesses leaving. We have to make our community attractive to bring other businesses and people into the community. Anything else?
Okay, alright. I'll turn it back over to council for comments. Councilor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I wanted to say thank you guys for pulling this together and I wanted to especially thank you and Bill for coming and speaking with us. I appreciate that a lot, but I also appreciate... But I also appreciate that, what I heard from you, Hugh, was that the, the people who are living out there in our community are wanting to be a part of our community. And we want them to be a part of our community, too. Maybe not all of them, right? Maybe there's still some resistance, and that's okay. But we, you have our support, and I want them to know that, too, that what we can do to make our community safe for everyone is really important. And that how we go about doing that, when you said they're learning to take responsibility, they want to live in nice places, too, even if it's out there, right? They want it to look nice. So we want that for you, too. So I know you're making connections with some people from La Puente and the volunteers. But keep us informed, okay? And, and then we're going to make it as, as best we can and then help you how you need to be helped, okay?
Councilor V. Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to also thank the Coalition and the Five Star Riders Club for all the work you guys do out there. It's awesome and it's a lot, and we appreciate it. And to, also to Hugh and Belle, we, you matter and you are important to this community. And you always have help here if you need it through the county with one of us. You guys matter. And if you could please tell the folks at the encampment community that they matter and we want them to be successful.
Councilor Grego?
Again, I just want to echo what the Councilor V. Hill just said. You know, we need to help each other out there. And I don't know, I guess that road there is used by people that run that, those, the, the water in, in, in that area, in the river, because there's gates there. But there's, there's a road there. And I've seen it, I've gone back there and I've seen those large items, those people just dumped their couches and stuff like that. And like I said, it's, it's something that we've been wanting to work with the county also because that's not only happening there, it's happening on the Coop Road and everywhere else. But thank you, Jamie and encampment people. Did, did he say there's sixty people out there or six? Sixty. Oh, my God. God, that's a lot of people. So, yeah, thank you.
Councilor Carson?
Did you say one-sixteen? Oh, I was going to say, yeah, no, I, I, I believe it's quite a bit higher than that. Thank you, guys, for that work out there. I've been out there a lot myself. And it, it was, it was, it was a mess. There was a lot of stuff out there. And everything you guys are doing is great. And as, just to reiterate what everybody up here said, we have, we have your guys, you know, we have you guys, we have your back on anything you're doing. So if you guys would like to involve us more, we would appreciate that. We do have, we do have things that we're working on to help mitigate some of this situation. It's cold out there and it's rough. And so we, we do want to know that, we want you to know that we are working on solutions to help mitigate this issue as best we can here in town.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, Councilor Brawls?
No, again, we greatly appreciate what you're doing. That's a lot of hard work. And I appreciate your attitude to keep, help keep Alamosa clean. So we, thank you. We greatly appreciate your efforts.
Councilor Hansley?
Oh, I'm sorry. So I was just, I'm going to reiterate what everyone else has said, so I'm going to echo all of that. I do think, Helen, I remember at our meeting, we talked about the dumpster. And so if I remember, we were kind of on track with that idea. Because I do think that would be something right off the start, that if we start this process going to have it where some of the things can be dumped initially on a regular basis, would be awesome. And so that starts that trend going. So I'll actually look to you to see where we're at with that.
Yeah, and so a dumpster is, would help for, for picking up trash and disposing of those types of things. Couches and large items is, would be an entirely different thing. So that's, that's another thing to try to evaluate. And it's hard to know if, you know, we can look at adding another dam, what the costs are and what we think the impact is. But it's also, people may not be from within the city, too, that are doing that. So we just, it's a, it's a bit of a complex thing that we need to take a look at, so, yes.
Also, we were thinking about the possibility of, you know, the poles with the concrete in them, like that they have in front of Walmart, is it possible to put some of those up in places where, where people can't drive back there? Is... On, onto the levee?
You can't really get over the levee now. As, as far as where, they have to get to where the gate is checked, you know, where the, where the diversion is checked, that has to be able to be accessed. So when you get to the end there, where the diversion's at, you really can't cross on a vehicle unless you're on an ATV or something that can get over the tracks. I go back there all the time, so I know the area very well. So the people that are dumping there are either, you know, ma- making a real hard effort to get back there or that's been back there for a while. The, the couches and stuff that you guys pulled out are before that area. And that has to be accessible for diversion checks and things like that. So you could, it's possible to probably gate it, but you can't put ballards up and cut the access off. That's just not a possibility.
Heather, I think you were going to make a comment to that.
I, I think Councilman Carson is much more familiar with that specific location. I haven't physically been out there. So I'll just go with that.
Okay, good. Thank you, Councilor Carson. Okay, any other comments? Well, done. Thank you all so very much. It's the little things that you do that make a huge difference. So we really appreciate everything that you're doing. And whenever we have an elected official come into City Council, we always like to try to recognize that elected official. And we are honored to have County Commissioner Helen Sigmund in here with us today. So thank you so much for your service. You're welcome.
And thank you for having us. I really appreciate Heather putting us on the agenda and everybody listening and being, feeling our feelings.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, up next, we have under Business Brought Forward by City Staff Resolution Number nineteen-twenty-nineteen. Under Public Works, Item One-A. Harry, okay?
Good evening, Council. Mr. Mayor?
Good evening.
We received application for annexation being Resolution Twenty-Dash, or, excuse me, nineteen-dash-twenty-nineteen, finding this hearing of substantial completion for the annexation of McLean-Fink subdivision lots sixty-six and sixty-seven. This property is part of an enclave located on the southwest corner of Ross Avenue and Seventeenth Street. There is water and sewer currently available at the property, and it's also served by a paved street. The petitioner, he is looking at building a couple duplexes. It's going to be two individual lots. The staff recommendation is Council adopt Resolution nineteen-dash-twenty-nineteen, finding the annexation petition of McLean-Fink subdivision lots sixty-six and sixty-seven to be substantially complete and set a date for an eligibility hearing for December eighteenth, twenty-nineteen.
Okay, thank you. Council? Councilor Brawls?
The City, the City Planning Committee Commission, did they approve this?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe it goes to Planning Commission.
Correct, it does not go to Planning Commission.
Councilor Carson?
Give me a...
Okay, Councilor Grego?
Okay, since staff's looked at it real close and, and is recommending this, I'll make the motion that we pass Resolution Number nineteen-twenty-nineteen, finding substantive compliance, annexation of the McLean-Fink subdivision lots sixty-six and sixty-seven.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No?
No, I'm, I'm clear. I was a little bit unclear on some...
Okay, no further discussion. Please start voting. Thank you.
Councilor Brawls asked if we needed a public hearing. This is just a resolution, right, Councilor?
Correct. We, this actually sets the public hearing on eligibility for December eighteenth. And then there'll be another public hearing, assuming that it's eligible when the consideration of the ordinance comes around. So you really don't even consider anything substantive until we're considering the ordinance, which is the final step.
Everybody's good? Thank you, thank you. The next item, under Business Brought Forward by City Staff, is Item One-B, authorized purchase of eleven acres surrounding independent ditch diversion works.
Thank you, Mayor. The city attorney is pulling up a map for you. This is one that is probably a little bit out of the blue for you. It's not one we were looking to track down and purchase. But this area of land is where the diversion and dam is, where we pull some of our ditch out that we are responsible for maintaining. I'm just kind of sorry. It's about eleven acres. And so the city, while the city attorney was out there on his personal time and had a conversation with the property owners, it came to light that they might be interested in selling this portion of it. They own the property that's on the other side, on the other side of the, the river. And so they can't really access this. They don't have much value. And so they have indicated that they're willing to sell it to us for two thousand per acre. That is about two-fifths the price that we pay for Western Rivers per acre. So we do feel it's a very appropriate and fair estimate. They also discounted it because it's undevelopable and that we agreed that we need to put in some protection for the east bank, which is in our interest as well. So the immediate is just to have the access around that area that we do need to maintain for the ditch. But the long term is to, so that's more of the aerial there that, that you can see for the property that we would be looking at. The long term, if we went to the other map, is at some point, if we were to ever want to connect the, a trail from that property down to the recently purchased Riparian property into the ranch property and further down to the Alamosa Refuge. So we feel it's a very fair price. The funding for this will come from our expected revenue from interest. Came in about a hundred thousand higher than we were expecting. So we feel that can more than cover this expense of twenty-eight thousand.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Carson?
Assuming that everyone would be comfortable, I read through this today. And I think that this is something that we should jump on. And I would make a motion that we authorize the city manager to purchase this.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Carson.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Councilor V. Hill?
So our plan is to further continue our trail system back in that area?
So yes, we, we have not had any discussions with Cheffus for that. So that's definitely long-term. But it's something back, way back when Pat Steenberg was here. And he was trying to lay out that, you know, for their public dedication, if we could get some of that. It went out this far. So it could be a really great location for entryway and, but there's easements that would have to be worked out and all of that. But irregardless of that, having the property here for us to maintain that and have easy access to maintain it is in our interest as well.
Councilor Grego?
I had a question. In reading the communication here, you said two thousand per acre. That's twenty-two thousand dollars because it's, what, eleven acres? And this thing says we're funding twenty-eight thousand.
So that is because the other part of the agreement for them to sell it to us at two thousand is that there's some work on the bank that needs to happen to better stabilize it, which is to our benefit as well. And so it includes those costs.
And actually, the bulk of the additional cost is we need to get a survey done. That's not surveyed. So we'll have to have a survey done. We'll have to take it through the county for a subdivision exemption approval. We will have to get title work done on it, and we're paying for all of those things. Also, we, until we get the survey done, we don't know how many acres it is. It's approximately eleven. It could be twelve. It could be ten.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion. We have a second. No further discussion. Please start voting. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Awesome. Okay, up next, under Finance, we have a public hearing and second reading of Ordinance Number twenty-seven-dash-twenty-nineteen.
Good evening, Council. This is the second reading of the, is the parameters ordinance to approve the refinancing of the debt for this twenty-nineteen, twenty-seventeen COP and the twenty-ten COP. Nothing's changed since then. There was some additional documentation that was added by the attorney that's doing the title work and the documentation work for us. But is, are there any questions?
No. So what I'll do is I'll open it up for a public hearing. At this time, I would like to open up a public hearing for Ordinance Number twenty-seven-dash-twenty-nineteen. If we have anyone in the audience who would make, like to make any comments, please come up to the podium at this time. All righty. Doesn't look like anyone's coming, so we will now close this public hearing, bring it back to Council. Councilor Brawls?
No, I think it's a good deal for the city. And it lowers our interest costs, right? So I think it's beneficial, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other further discussion? Okay, all right. So what we're going to do is start voting then. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you so very much. Appreciate it. Okay, up next on the agenda, under Item Three-A, a motion authorizing the sponsorship of fifty-one hundred dollars. Who's going to talk about that?
I, I can present on that. And if Council wants to join, join in. So this is the third time that we're using this process. So we used it for twenty-nineteen, and this will be for the fun, first half of twenty-twenty. So that's crazy to say that. The total budget in the line item for sponsorship is ten thousand. So the goal of this process was to do five thousand the first half, the five thousand the second half. I, I think this process is working really well in regards to, it's not piecemeal and it's not, decisions aren't being made in a vacuum of what it's going to take away from. So I think being able to see everyone who's applying for that timeframe helps the recommend, recommendations of how to allocate those funds. Because the recommendations are always more than the funds that we have available. So for this year, we had six entities submit for the first half. All of them were the same from previous years, except for one. And so I'll just go through this. Youth of the Year submitted again, and the recommendation is to provide four hundred dollars. The Cinco de Mayo Celebration, once again, submitted, and the recommendation is for one thousand seven hundred and fifty, plus use of the stage, which is valued at two hundred. This is the new one. This is SLV Big Band CD promo. The group spent a long time talking about this one, on if it really fit the criteria of what the sponsorship was supposed to be, as far as it, is it an event for the public to attend and, and those types of things. And felt that it was probably better serviced out of the public relations line item that City Council has in its budget. So the recommendation is for a hundred dollars from there. The Alamosa Roundup, again, submitted, and the recommendation is for two thousand two hundred and fifty. The Rells and Ls Block Party was recommended for three hundred, plus use of the stage valued at six hundred. And the Rodeo Dance and Street Party, again, submitted with the recommendation of three hundred, plus the use of the stage valued at three hundred. I now know if Councilor Daniel or V. Hill want to contribute anything else.
Just, could you, if you have that, do you have the, the groups that did not apply this time that did last year? Do you have that? No. But there was two or three groups that applied for this, same sponsorship last, the first time we did this, so...
I think it was the Children's Fair and Mozart Symphony.
And just thank you to Ms. Daniel and Heather and Jessica Jolly for working on this. It was seamless.
That, that's what I was going to say. I felt really good. I think Jess has done a great job letting us know what it actually takes to put on some of these events from the city. Jan did a great job, too, Councilor V. Hill. So, I mean, I think... So I mean, I think we had some really good discussion about what this money should be used for. And it just feels like a really positive way to read people's, you know, applications and to know we're never gonna have the money that they requested. The request was for sixteen thousand eight hundred. We have five thousand. And so I feel like we made some pretty good decisions or pretty good recommendations based on what we know works in our community and really promoting community events within our community.
Thank you. Council Gregel?
Hensley was first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Go ahead, Hensley.
That's okay. I was just gonna thank both Councilor Daniel and Councilor V. Hill. I love this because I feel like it's very transparent and it's a nice, clean process. And so it's great to hear that reassurance from both of you as well as Heather. And so thanks for all of your hard work.
Thank you.
My question is, how do we, do we advertise this? Or how do people know that these funds are available and stuff? Because it seems like just the same people are doing, are applying the ones that know.
So we do advertise it. We also send information to anyone who's applied before to make sure that they're aware of it. But yes, we do advertise it.
How do we advertise?
We do press releases and we put it out on social media and it's on our website.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Council V. Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. So I move that we approve the sponsorship first round in the amount of fifty-one hundred to six entities that are detailed in the council communication.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I too would like to just make a brief comment. Thank you to Councilor Daniel and Councilor V. Hill. It's always great to see you all work together as a team to find the best results for these organizations. And thank you for the staff too that participated. Good job. All right. Start voting, please.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay. Thank you. Up next, we have committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? No committee reports. All right. We're moving right along. Staff announcements.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I wanted to just share publicly the email that we had received from T S J C that they had given us a heads up that they were taking this into consideration, which is to look at ending that contract, having the officer provided from a security perspective. We appreciate the notice and making sure that we would be okay with it. So it's a very positive partnership type situation. And what we shared with them is the timing of it is actually good because we do have vacancies. So it's not as if we're fully staffed and someone's gonna lose their job because of this. So the timing of that is very good. And so in case, I just didn't know if anyone had questions on that or I can keep going. Celebrations of Light is scheduled for December sixth. I wanted to make sure Council, 'cause sometimes I don't always connect the dots until staff asks me a question. But with the courthouse no longer a county building, that does change up how we do the celebration of light. So we're kinda rethinking that. Definitely still starting here and lighting things up and all of that fun stuff. We've got Santa at the Narrow Gauge Bookshop. But we're probably not gonna have a tour that goes down to the courthouse and all that 'cause it's privately owned now and just there's other decorations going on as well. So we're also gonna look at growing that maybe with the chamber to see if there's businesses that will really step up and decorate. We can list them on the map and do some things like that. And so try to make it bigger, but we're kinda just changing it up for this year. I wanted to share with you, I know you guys have been watching closely the development of the apartments and if Foster Avenue is being constructed, it is being constructed. So Jeff Martinez has moved forward with that, thankfully. I think he had a contractor and it was kinda making him nervous as well as this weather was changing. So I wanted to make sure Council is aware that that is moving along. We also wanted to share that T S J C, a professor there contacted us that some grant funding had been achieved in another application written in order to maybe put in an electric charging station that they didn't think would no longer work at T S J C and to see if we were interested in shifting that over to here. We also thought of the Visitor Center and brought Kale into that discussion. And so I think collaboratively, we're gonna look at maybe putting it there. But it's just a neat example of some community collaboration, starting at T S J C and gonna end its way over at the Visitor Center. And before Eric goes, I'm gonna do the fun thing, which is we had a very successful vote yesterday regarding the dedicated street sales tax. I think for me, I slept great. I guess for Public Works, not so much 'cause now they're realizing all the work, so different kinds of stresses there.
Hold on. We gotta give you all the round of applause.
Oh, well. Well, I just, to me, it's amazing. So first time out, it was a big ask. Anytime you're asking for a sales tax. But honestly, for I don't know how many times Deacon had to crunch those numbers and work with Ray and Farren and go look at the roads and then working with the Citizen Street Committee and those volunteers that dedicated their time and Harry providing his calm leadership through all of that. The presentations, the materials that Kelly put together and organized and then Council walking almost every block in the city, putting the signs out, doing the door knocking, making that face-to-face contact. It just, it took everything. And so it's amazing team effort and it's great to have this as our conclusion to that effort. So yay, team. So what we were gonna, what we're gonna look at doing is clearly, Public Works is working with Martin Reynolds to make sure we've got the design. We're gonna escalate our discussions with the utilities because we don't want anything holding these projects up. And so we're just, we're kicking into gear on all of that. The other thing is probably in February, we're gonna bring a budget amendment to you 'cause we've gotta set up the fund and we've gotta have the revenue account in there. We've gotta have the expenses. We've gotta have the transfer of five hundred from the general fund. We need everything to match one-hundred percent everything that we promised. And so we're gonna bring a budget amendment that will lay that out as well as an amended C I P to match that. So you'll see that coming probably in February with a budget amendment for that. So just what you can expect coming up. And then I know I've picked up about five signs. We've asked if staff's out and about to pick up signs, but... So at least we're picking up signs after it being successful, so.
That's right.
And just a reminder to that 'cause I know a lot of times we get complaints, so. And then I'll let Eric go.
Can I add one little thing?
Sure.
Just to, so I don't know if we got the notice, if everybody looked at their notice from C M L. But just to add to this, showing how much our hard work pays off because there was eleven tax initiatives and only three in the state of Colorado passed.
Wow.
And so I just really think, again, the hard work by staff, obviously us as well, but just as a group, how we thought this process through from beginning to end, I think truly paid off. And so I just wanted to add that to what you had to say.
Good job. Good job. Okay. Eric?
I mean, Heather's introduction made it sound like I'm just always a wet blanket, but. I'm not a wet blanket for this one. I just wanted to let you know that we finally got the decree for approval of the change of water right at the golf course for irrigation of the back nine finalized.
Good.
So that is no longer operating under a substitute supply plan. It is now, it is now a permanent change of water right. One of the great things about it having stretched out so long is that we finally prevailed upon the opposers to agree that we don't have to pump any water back from the Blanca Vista Pond to the river. So we've simplified things and I think we're pretty happy about that.
Yeah. Thank you very much. You're not a wet blanket, Eric. All right. Okay. Up next on the agenda, we have local liquor licensing authority action.
So Council, this is something that Holly reminded me we have done in the past on the consent calendar, but it's been since twenty-seventeen that we last had a round of compliance checks. This round of compliance checks, we had one outfit fail and that is Airport Liquors sold to the underage undercover operative. Consistent with what we have as a city offered in the past in terms of a stipulated resolution, I have discussed this violation with the manager of Airport Liquors and have offered a stipulation for a five-day suspension with two days to be served and three days to be held in abeyance pending no future violations in the next year. And the, as always, the city has adopted provisions that allow someone serving a suspension to pay a fine instead of that suspension. So that would be a possibility here. There have been discussions with Airport Liquors that they may be closing the liquor business and not retaining their liquor license. So there is an option in the stipulation also that as with the ones that we did in twenty-seventeen, they could run all of their employees through tips training in lieu of serving the suspension, but they may not choose to do that if they're not gonna be staying open. So that's the stipulation that I have discussed with Airport Liquors. That is before you for you to consider whether you want to accept that stipulation.
Okay. Council Hensley?
I have a question. So I like the idea of the training. And so when I was reading this, is it something going forward that we could actually require if somebody fails that they need to get their staff trained?
I don't believe so. I mean, so we do it as an incentive when we do it this way, that they can do tips training instead of serving a suspension. But apart from doing it that way, I don't think we could make that a condition of their continued renewal of a liquor license. I mean, I suppose. I suppose if you wanted to consider revocation, you could say, hey, this is serious enough. We're gonna revoke your license unless you do tips training.
Thank you. Council Brawls and then Councilor Daniel.
Yeah, along with Councilor Hensley. One sentence in here kinda bothers me. It says that if... If the employee making the sale has completed a state-approved server training, a written warning is recommended. In this case, the employee making the sale had not completed such training, so that provision is not applicable. Sounds to me like it's, there's an incentive not to take the training 'cause you're not giving a written warning.
There's an incentive to take the training because if you take the training or if your, if your boss makes you take the training, then your boss gets just a written warning. If the people have gone through the training, the recommend... And again, that's the guideline. The guideline is if your employees have gone through the training, you as the store owner only get a written warning. And I think the thinking is because you're doing what you can. You're sending people to the training. It's not really the store owner's fault if the people didn't retain what it is that they supposedly learned in the training. So that's the thinking there.
But if you don't take the training, probably.
Right. So they got a higher consequence because their employee hadn't done tips training. So they get more than a written warning. Had their employee done the tips training, the guideline would say, you don't have to serve any suspension. You just get a written warning. But because their server didn't do that training, the guideline is you serve zero to five days or zero to ten days, I'm sorry.
And a five-hundred-dollar fine, right?
The five-hundred-dollar fine is for the server, not for the business.
So Councilor Brawls, it's not a disincentive. They got a higher consequence, not a warning.
Okay. Just wanna make it clear. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Councilor Daniel and then Councilor Gregel.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Do we know how much it costs to go through tips training? So the challenge that I have with doing tips training in lieu of a fine, especially if they're going to close their business, is like, it's not okay to serve to underage people. And so I think it needs to feel like it's not okay to serve underage people. And so I would be interested to know if, like what the, like what the costs are for both of those things. And I don't know if anyone locally is still doing the training or not, which is, I mean, we can, we can find that out. I just, do you know, Sam?
So do we do the tips training? Do we have anybody that's currently certified? That's like an amateur certification. But I mean, we have a form of engagement.
Do we charge for it?
Parker P. D. charges thirty bucks per student.
Okay. So I think it's important that people get tips trained. I want to incentivize tips training. I'm not saying that. But I also think it's really important that there is some sort of sanction that actually hurts a little if we're doing the training for free.
So you would rather see something like a reduced sanction if you do tips training?
Yes, versus a completely letting it go.
Thank you. Council Gregel?
I, Councilor Daniels asked the question that they still get the five-hundred-dollar fine the person that does the sale, right?
Well, they get, they get a fine of whatever the judge deems to be appropriate. Five hundred is the minimum.
Because apparently I had spoke to these people and the person that sold never even told the owner that he got busted. So this was a late notice and they.
That's what the owner told me as well, yeah.
And he says, you better get down there and straighten this out, you know? So, and I don't know what the process is when somebody's selling to minors. Do they send a letter to the, to the business itself or?
We do. And so interestingly, in this situation, the undercover operation was in May. The police department didn't get the server served with the citation until August, I think.
Oh, my God.
They couldn't find him. And so the, the report didn't get filed to start dealing with the owner until they got the tips trainers or the, no, I'm sorry, until they got the server served with the citation. And I've talked with P. D. about that and we'll tighten that up so that we get the owner process started sooner.
Sure. They need to know because like you say, if somebody takes off and, you know, they don't care. That's why we put that five-hundred-dollar fine 'cause you can easily sell to minors and just take off and the owner gets a whole, holding the bag by getting his liquor license shut down.
Well, that's gonna happen whether or not we've fined the server. The owner's still gonna be on the hook for this process.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Carson?
Was he not employed there anymore from May to August?
Apparently not. I mean, I would assume that, would've tried to track him down there.
So he's only working part-time and he was off for several weeks and we've been tracking him.
Okay. 'Cause my point in asking that was if we, if we implement tips training and the guy's no longer there, that's invalid for that employee anyway, so.
For that guy, right. But they would have to, the tips training option is you gotta do all your employees.
I think that's pretty minimal as far as tips training as a substitute as well.
Okay. So you're looking for a motion, Eric?
Yes.
Okay. Council, what you gonna do? Okay. Council Gregel?
Okay. I'll make a motion that we take the stipulations of finding an order for Airport Liquors compliance check.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay.
I have something, Mayor. Sorry. I just would like to know what they choose. So if we can just have a follow-up so we know what the consequence wound up being.
Okay. Motion second. No further comments. Let's start voting, please. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Yeah, great.
So I just would like for future, I didn't want it to affect this. I think I would like to consider looking at the idea of mandating tips for future offenders since especially there's no cost to it or very minimal, even if it's a thirty-dollar certificate or book cost. But I, I just think it's pretty important to have the, if they've made a mistake, then obviously that idea of then having their staff go through the tips training.
Well, and as I kinda rolled that over in my head after it was brought up, I think that we can do that in the context of a stipulation because the stipulation is to avoid potential unknown, more severe consequences. And so it's, the stipulation is really, look, we're not, we will agree to these more limited sanctions so long as you agree that your employees are gonna go through tips training. so long as you agree that your employees are gonna go through tips training by this and such a date. So thinking about it more after first answering your question, yes, I think we can do that. I think we could include that as a condition of all stipulations that we do.
And I'll add to it. I, I used to be the serve-safe alcohol trainer for a long time here in the city. And so I would do it for a lot of the different organizations. And I really do think it makes, it made a difference. And part of it was when I was at Chili's, they mandated everybody to do it there. And so not, obviously mistakes can still happen, but I just think it really does help that people are much more aware. I know a lot of the people that I worked with didn't realize some of the stuff and it's really eye-opening, so.
All right, thank you.
I have a follow-up question to that. So as the liquor licensing authority, we have no rights as a municipality to implement a requirement in order to renew that liquor license or approve a liquor license that before they come with, when they come with their name petitions and when they come with all the other stipulations that we have to give them in order to apply for a liquor license, we, we don't, we don't have a mandate that would state that, we can't create something that would state that once they're open for business, any employee being hired would then be required to have tips training? Is that something we're not able to do? As, as, and, and, and I'm saying that because it would be something they would have to come in and submit afterwards, of course, because it would be after the employee was hired. But I don't understand why we can't implement something like that as a city.
Holly probably has more familiarity with this than I do. But my take on it is that the, the role of the city in the context of approving a liquor license application is just to consider the needs and the desires of the indulged inhabitants of the neighborhood. And whether or not a, an outfit provides tips training isn't part of that consideration. I think it would make sense at every application that's being considered for council or staff to make clear to the applicant, hey, you, you wanna do some tips training because you don't want to be in front of council for a revocation or suspension hearing. And if you are, because mistakes do still happen, the guidelines would indicate that things will go much better for you if your employees have all gone through tips training. So that we can certainly do as an admonition, but I don't think we can make it a requirement of, of a license being contingent upon it.
All right, thank you. All right, that brings us down to council comments. Okay, start off with you, Council Carson. You got your light on? Okay, I'll start, let's do it this way. I know everybody's gonna have something to say. So I'll just take it from you all the way down to you and I'll finish it, all right? How about that? Go ahead, Counsel.
I just wanted to reiterate what everyone said earlier. And I wanted to, you know, again, thank staff for all the hard work in helping get the Streets Fund passed. And I wanted to thank council and, you know, convey my appreciation as, at the team we are. We, we are a great team and I think the effort that we put forward in putting this together and our plan showed that. So congratulations, guys. I, I just wanted to tell you guys that. And, and I also wanted to congratulate the community because this is huge for us and it will improve quality of life and it will move us forward. So thank you, guys, and thank the city of Alamosa and everybody who voted.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to congratulate Christina Daniel, Charlie Grego and Liz Thomas on their victories last night. The, the team is back and let's go get busy and get, let's keep progressing, keep moving Alamosa forward. Want to congratulate all of us, everybody involved on the street tax. It's always hard to push something, to push a tax increase on anybody. So that was awesome. And there's always this tone of, of trust in government. And I just wanna, I wish people were here tonight. I, I want to say that as long as I'm here and I know with this team up here, that money will be, we will be great shepherds of that money and it will go to streets. And you can trust this government here. And then my third thing is, and you brought, you talked about it a little bit during your follow-up, Heather, is I did get a few comments and questions and phone calls this morning after the marijuana stuff about the outdoor grows and that. So they were asking, well, what if I grow in my backyard, you know? So you talked about a nuisance, stuff like that. So if we can keep informing people what this is gonna look like, and I know it just passed, but once we get those regulations and laws in place and that, if we can do a good job communicating that to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel.
I guess it's my turn since I'm the next one down the road. So I'm, I'm gonna echo what everybody said. And so obviously, congratulations to Counsel Daniel, Counsel Grego, and obviously to myself. It is great to have our team together. And I think it'll just continue to grow and we've got a lot of things that we're gonna continue to build. And then also, as a side note, I feel very honored. I will be going in two weeks to San Antonio for the League of Cities event as representing the state as president of CML. And so what that does also mean is I will miss the next meeting for city council, but I will be representing as well in San Antonio.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Hensley. Counsel Grego?
I had a couple of things after 36 years of sitting here. Finally, I finally got where we can fix the streets in our area. And, well, that, but, no, no. And, and those people in that area, I made sure that when we walked that area that they got out. I said, you need to get, you need to get out there and vote if you want these streets changed. And it, it worked out. So I really appreciate all the effort from staff. And, and now, finally, after all these years of trying a lot of different things just to get those roads done, now it's gonna happen. Secondly, Monday is Veterans Day and we have a pass and review stand that we invite staff, council to come and sit and review the parade. If you, if you want to come down, it's, you can come down there about maybe a quarter after 10. The parade starts at 10:50 and we're gonna have our ceremonies downtown. And this year, we got a young lady singing a Stars, Stars, Bag of Banner. And then we have, we even have a little flyover, so. We invite everybody to come down and support the veterans. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Counsel Grego. Counsel Brawls?
Yeah, I want to say congratulations to the counselors that won. I know Counselor Hensley and Counselor Grego had a hard fight. Congratulations to Counsel Daniels. And, you know, Counsel Grego will now be served, what, 40 years? We're gonna have to resurrect a, put up a monument for you. At the end of 40 years. Congratulations. That's, well, that's quite the service and dedication. So thanks, thanks to everybody for what you did.
Thank you, Counsel Brawls.
Well, I just want to say I am so excited and so thankful that I get to serve another four years with this team. Thank you all for your support. I do want to say thank you to Mr. Orndolph. He was really, he's a very wonderful man. He's a nice person. He's a good person. And I'm really looking forward to continuing to work with him on the activities that we do together. There are a lot of places in the community where we cross paths. And so I really do appreciate what he does for our community as well. And I wanted to say that. I am really excited about hearing from the members of our community tonight who felt more marginalized and that they were able to come and speak with us. And so very excited about that. I'm excited about moving forward and bringing that up in our homeless coalition. I think, you know, looking at the ways to bring people together and have those conversations in different ways than we have been is going to feel really positive. And I think we're, we're moving in the right direction with that. And then I'm really excited about the Veterans Day Parade on Monday. I'm excited about that. And I wanted to say thank you to all of the service members. I'm very proud to be a daughter of veterans and a sister of a veteran. And it's been one of the things I think that's made our family great. And so I thank you, Counsel Grego, for all the work you put into Veterans Day. And again, congratulations to Counsel Hensley and Counsel Grego as well. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, we're gonna start this over again. Counsel Carson?
I did not forget you guys. Congratulations on the win. Because it is, it is a great team. And I just wanted to reiterate what everybody said with one follow-up comment. This team is so great. This staff is so great that we, everyone proofed that fund. Nobody will mess with it. Doesn't matter what anyone does. No matter who's here, no matter who's working, that money will be applied in the way we promised the citizens.
Thank you, Counsel Carson. Counsel Viel?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick side note. Congratulations to our local high school volleyball and football teams and our cross-country team, cross-country team here at Alamosa. I think the boys and girls both had top 10 finishes at their state meets. Andy Rice and his wife, Alamosa's hosting a regional tournament this Saturday. I think it starts at 1 o'clock. I know Sanford volleyball's in it. Sergeant volleyball's still alive. Dell Nord is hosting a volleyball regional. And Sergeant football is still alive and so is Sanford football. So there's a lot of stuff going on here in the valley this weekend. Centauri football's still alive, so all of our valley teams are still alive, so. Good luck to all those guys.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, my turn to add. So I would like to also add is for Veterans Day. So this will be on Saturday night. Big Band is playing at Richardson Hall at Adam State. And so it's a great event. And so if people have time to go to that, they do a fantastic job. And we have somebody here who is part of the Big Band. 6 o'clock, is that correct? Do you, 6 o'clock? 7 o'clock? So, but it is at Richardson Hall and it is a great event, so.
Thank you. Counsel Grego?
One more thing. On the Veterans Day Parade, anybody's welcome to participate there. You know, you don't just show up there on Sixth and Hunt, maybe about 9:30 and you'll, you'll get lined up. And now that Counsel Viel was congratulating people, I think we need to congratulate Mona Vista Band. I think they took, they took state. And they, they, when they bring that band down for Veterans Day, boy, that is, that's great what they do. So congratulations to them too.
Okay, thank you.
And I think Mona Vista may be past their one cent, so. I don't know, it's not, it's still the unofficial, but I think they may have passed their one cent.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Brawls and Counsel Daniel, since we're going. Okay, good. All right, so I'll wrap it up then, okay? I too would like to thank staff, entire staff, entire team, along with the street committee, all of council, the texts, the phone calls, the knocking the doors, the listening to people voice their concerns to the issues as well. Thank you. This proves that there is nothing that this team can not accomplish when we work together. We had a united front from the beginning and we continue to have that united front even when we were getting some pushback in the community. And that really meant a lot to us. So thank you all for standing strong. Thank you staff for doing everything that you've done. Thank you for investing the monies to make this possible for the signs and all of the print material as well. The other comment I would like to, I have is for, I would like to congratulate Counsel Daniel, Counsel Grego and Counsel Hensley. For, you know, we, we do things classy here in Alamosa when it comes to running campaigns. And I really appreciate Counsel Daniel being very classy, along with Counsel, I mean, Mr. Orndolph as well. And the last thing I have on my notes right here is last night, we had an opportunity to celebrate law enforcement throughout the San Luis Valley. I believe Dylan Brown had a lot to do with putting that on and some community sponsors or businesses showed their appreciation. And I have to say that our Alamosa PD represented in the competition games that they had last night, beating out the, I think it's the. Colorado State Patrol and Alamosa County. And a lot of events, we give them a round of applause. It's a wonderful event and it was great to be a part of that. I also would like to thank Heather and her staff who participated today in some activities in the Alamosa Rural Road Show. The, hear some of the things that are going on throughout the San Luis Valley and also being contributors to the conversation so that people in the front range will hear what's going on in Alamosa and take it back to their areas as well. But once again, thank you all. You, you made me proud. And I always have to end with the acronym TEAM stands for Together Everyone Achieves More. Thank you all. Have a fantastic night. And if we don't have any further discussion. No, no, we don't have one.
So that was only needed in case that vote for the purchase of property needed more discussion.
Yes, it's possible. And you all did a wonderful job, so we get to eliminate. Okay, if no further discussion, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Great job.